Mr. Chairman. Hot weather.
It's on a size board. We're up in the spring.
And then we'll do the other primary one we haven't heard from in a while. John, so October, same thing, subsequently.
We just sort of threw up. Well, frankly, it's gonna get interesting. It's important.
Well, agree, but I also want to, you guys are.
I know what you said, so. I took.
Memorial March, the Ring of Bridge. It was one of the people that I worked with for a couple of years. I don't want to be almost chomping at the skin and just. Charlie, I won't see this. Well, just once he started trying to get school security. In downtown, because there's so much history. Here. She was not going to grant to try and start collecting all this. I just got to get him off the dime because she started moving that. Schools, you know, get them now. What people ask, because they're getting out. How are you? You know, it's always just. Anyway, I can put it below in the dark.
Yeah, it's been a year and a half.
Next. I find I have a huge amount of things that have to the marks a lot. It was in. It's completely another project. I have to stick to the. Somebody started watching. Just. I still was. But it's. There's a channel. What's going on? Economically. On short. Finally, it's more than shared inside. Then. I could. Glad you're dressed for the fun and not for show, you know? Do that at the council meeting with your ties or whatever.
Hi, I don't.
There should be a name tag for you. Is what's on the end there?
That's the last one.
Deborah, where there should have been a name tag for you.
Let's see, Janelle, she's dealing out tags.
Hi, it's true. That's a trivia question.
Say something appropriate.
She's gonna be one of the first to talk.
Yeah. Yes.
Last week. What's next? The original sign.
Oh, it's Tom.
The grading team. I don't.
Now, since she.
It's quite a light today. I doubt because I had to check. It's inside now. Well, that was too nice. I think. I could not just. It just. There's just.
Who knows what'll. You know, questions if we can't get them and we have to go there, we'll have to go there. But. These springs are great except for not very good for us.
We know. I'm sitting with. The City Hall situation. It can't really. It's too far away.
I don't have to sign. We make a recommendation.
I want to focus on like the city. City's free.
You've got one here.
Yeah, I gotta say between hearing last week and today. I have. Sitting in my desk with my computer in front of me, I can read a lot better this way.
Right.
Any. And I think, I think. So we're sending. Fresh.
That's why I am the reason to talk about medicine. That's the first thing, because the Solicitor General's order is based on the legislation is a little bit. But I understand that I know we have to get that an accurate location.
But there's.
It's gonna get. They want to go to the street.
Yes. Well, let's. It's. I expect. I mean, I think.
I can't tell me to zoom because I've still got a schedule. I had one Monday night, I had one last night. Diversify hiring, diversify talents.
That's, that's.
Complicated because. No, it's. State, but it's. The one on Monday night was with President John Dick College. Study on. One would say. Last.
Sorry, I didn't even know what it puts about.
All right, thank you very much. It will be nice that Mr. Canada.
I'm actually.
Ready? Anne Marie. Okay. I'm gonna call to order the Lewis Planning Commission regular monthly meeting on Wednesday, July 21st at 6:30. We're a little bit behind. We're here in the Margaret Rollins Center in the conference room. We have a specific agenda tonight, but first we're going to have some announcements. I'm gonna call upon our esteemed city manager, Anne Marie, to talk about our meeting arrangements going forward.
Good evening, so I think everybody knows that the governor lifted the state of emergency last week or two weeks ago. Last week, I guess, July 13th. So to hold our virtual meetings, we were previously operating under the emergency order that allowed the virtual meetings. The General Assembly passed and the governor signed a bill during this past legislative session that allows a virtual meeting option. And one of the the main components is that you can have the virtual meeting as long as there is a an anchor location and that the anchor location is open to the public. And at least one member of the body is present at the anchor location. So what we are doing in the city is we have two anchor locations designated. And that is this room and council chambers in both locations. We have, you can see the cameras set up. We can then people can participate by Zoom, at least for the immediate future. We are looking to then phase out Zoom and go to streaming. So once it's streaming, the full body would need to be present. But the the public could watch from home. They can't participate from home, but we will continue to stream. We, you know, we haven't discussed a timeline for phasing out the Zoom. There are still, you know, a lot of people who are not comfortable being fully in person. So I anticipate that we will have Zoom for some period of time. But even after that period of time, we will have at least the streaming where the meetings can be watched on YouTube.
Any questions for the commission?
We talked about this in the annexation earlier today. Is is there a reason that we wouldn't just continue with the streaming sort of indefinitely?
We are gonna stream indefinitely.
Well, or Zoom, I mean, you know, I just said the the hearing, the public hearing last week was maybe one of the better hearings I've ever attended. There were faces I've never seen before that were there, maybe because they didn't have to come to a room. I'm wondering why we wouldn't keep that kind of access open.
Yeah, I I think that that's ultimately going to be a decision for mayor and council to to determine if that is something they want to do long term from the administration standpoint. We see Zoom as something to get us through the end of the pandemic and and then we would move to streaming. There there is something lost when you have people not together that, you know, we need to to be conscious of as well.
All right, thank you, Amber, very much. I want to welcome our two newest commissioners, one to my right, Gabrielle, and Tom Jensen to my left. This is the first time we've been together in quite some time. In fact, that's my start off trivia question. Does any member of the commission other than newbies remember the last time we were together and and or where? Well, since I had such a resounding response. It was. February 19th, 20th. And we were meeting in mayor and council chambers. And it was also the first occasion where we had a formal meet and greet for the city planner, Janelle Cornwell. They preceded that meeting at five o'clock. But we have not been in the company of our fellow citizens or each other in en masse since February 19th, 2020. And I'm delighted to say we're able to come back. Hopefully that the vaccination rate in Delaware of plus 70% is gonna help us all be able to continue to meet in person. But we will be, the city will be monitoring that and keep us posted. The last announcement I have is just a record statement, so anybody recusing themselves, don't sweat it. There is gonna be no discussion of Fisher's Cove tonight. The public record is open until close of business Friday, July 30th. And we will be discussing that in our August meeting. And we will be looking at the comments that have been submitted. I encourage anyone present or otherwise listening to get their comments in. I know we received some today. It's important that we get as many insights and concerns or expressions of interest and questions so that we can take those up as we deliberate in August and perhaps beyond. Unless there are any other announcements from commissioners or ex officio who unfortunately didn't have a seat at the table, there are too many of us. I'm gonna turn to the agenda.
For the benefit of those who are listening from home, just when you speak, make a point to lean into the mic. That these mics aren't as sensitive as the mics in council chambers. So you you really do need to be closer to it to be picked up. And what we don't want is for people at home to to not be able to hear.
And I should say that the little trinkets that you got were just a thank you from the city, from the mayor and the city manager and city council. Say thank you for your service and your assistance. We know you spend a lot of time on the planning commission matters. This is certainly not compensation, but just an acknowledgement of how much we appreciate your contribution. So thank you all very much. Turning then to item B1, presentation and discussion of possible recommendation to mayor and city council regarding the final subdivision plan for Old Town at White's Pond, formerly known as White's Pond Meadow, located off Freeman Highway and Monroe Avenue, zoned R2 Sussex County tax map 335-8.00-46.00. We have had a report from our city planner that was on the website and has been distributed. Janelle, is there any opening remarks you need to make or should we just turn it to questions?
I think you can just turn it to questions, but I'd happy to answer any questions. And I know the applicant is here to answer any questions as well.
And I note that she also today circulated this afternoon a chart with conditions and issues that were discussed previously for us to remind ourselves of some of the elements of the recommendation we made before to make sure those are all handled. I would also note that the extent, an extension was granted on preliminary consent for good cause. But preliminary consent on this matter expires the 9th of November, 2021. So it is incumbent upon us to act as expeditiously as possible. Our job tonight is to hopefully conclude consideration of this matter and forward a recommendation on to mayor and city council who will hold a public hearing and then have a final review of this matter.
I forgot one thing.
Go ahead.
They are looking for a waiver from the requirement of the Del Dot entrance permit.
Right.
As we've discussed in the past, this is something you can't get without a plan being approved. They do have a loano from DRBA because this is actually off of Freeman Highway. It's off of DRBA's road, so they're working in conjunction with Del Dot to to get that entrance plan permit, but they do have a loano or a letter of no objection to record for that.
That's it, that's on page two of her memo, that the entrance cannot be until the final site plan is submitted for the record. Does anybody remember what what Freeman, who Freeman Highway is named for?
The local astronaut that died during training.
Delaware astronaut. All right, turning to the other commissioners, are there questions that you want to discuss? Issues you want to discuss, matters you want to factually raise with Janelle? Joe, please.
Oh, way back when, when this was active, the the homeowners association south of this was, I don't want to use the word threatening, I want to say threaten, but they were going to gate off the Monroe Avenue Extension Street. Did that ever get resolved?
It did not, because that actually would require review and approval by the Sussex County Planning Commission.
Okay, all right.
At a show field.
Correct.
And this plan does not propose any type of gate.
Wasn't there something in there that actually suggested that that it would remain open?
Based on this plan, it is to be required to be open because it is connection, they're connecting Monroe Avenue to the road in Schofield.
That's actually my question. Will that just be a construction entrance or is that gonna be a permanent right of way for app for new residents at White's Pond?
No, that that's a permanent interconnection of the subdivisions.
It's a road.
And it was designed to connect the subdivisions together.
And I know that I'm coming in late a little bit on this, but I I did have a few questions regarding the traffic studies and the DRBA. From the documents that I found, and please correct me if I'm incorrect. Um, I couldn't, I could not ascertain whether or not the DRBA was was recommending a traffic light or not. So what is the status on that?
There will be a traffic light and they were working out the signal for the agreement at that intersection.
Okay, because I was taking it that Del Dot was deferring it off to DRBA, right?
Well, there's a DRBA road and Del Dot wanted a light. Initially, DRBA was not in favor of such interrupting the flow to to and from the ferry. But I think given the increased traffic we're all experiencing, I think they've come to recognize the necessity. Plus, it's also the crossroads for the bike path, which is getting riskier and riskier, unfortunately.
And one quick follow up on the same topic. The last traffic study was July, May of 2019, is that correct?
That would have been when the information was done, correct? Because after that point, then they started moving towards their engineering phases based on that information and moving forward.
And has there been any discussion thus far about requiring enough data, given the increase in traffic that we've all seen in the community?
So typically what happens is they take and do the study and then they project into the future based on that information and the traffic counts that were done and the other projects going on in the area. So they have planned for the development for not just this this development, but because if you, a traffic impact study is not just looking at this development, it's looking holistically at a much larger area. And then, so it's taking all of that into consideration. But once the traffic, the TIS, the traffic impact study is completed, then the applicant starts working with, in this case, Del Dot and the DRBA to work out what requirements are required. You don't go back and then update information because you're basing the information on the data that was collected. So you have, they base the information on the most current data that they had and that were they were asked to provide.
But you still have a projection that's based on 2019 numbers rather than a projection that's based on 2021 numbers.
Right, and again, because this application came in in 2018, the data was done in 2019. And then you move forward from that point going forward. So you don't continue to, you don't continue, once you do the the report, the report is kind of set. And then you just, based on that data, you figure out is the traffic signal required? What entrance? Turn lanes are required based on that information? You can't continue to redo that because otherwise you'd never get through the process.
Well, can I ask a question about what the numbers mean on here? I'm looking at stuff. It says in 2025, it'll be like 100. Midday weekend.
If you can just, there you go.
Midday weekend, it'll it'll be like 156 seconds to turn. Is that? Is that a proper indication?
I'm gonna default to the applicant's engineer because.
I'm looking at page 10.
Page 10 of the plan.
Traffic study.
Of the traffic study. Again, that's already been approved.
There are, there are higher numbers in here, but 402, 1,036 seconds.
So.
In yourself for the record, please.
And I'm just gonna like, that was all taken into consideration to get even the preliminary consent. So the, and I know a lot of new people, but the traffic impact study was, that information was taken and to get the preliminary consent and then so they based that information on that.
Okay, Janelle, but that's this intersection and you go a half a mile towards the.
West.
You know, west towards the high school and there's another intersection. And you go another half mile and there's another big intersection. So how long does it take me to get to Wawa?
The.
The day, the time and the time of the year. So the the day of the week, the time, because it's gonna change. But I think Mr. Lardner can answer some of the questions.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Rick Lardner, a principal and professional engineer with the firm Davis, Bowen and Friddell. I'm familiar with the traffic impact study. I do not have it memorized. I did not bring a copy with me, so bear with me as I kind of talk through the traffic impact study. And I think I'll be able to answer your questions. So as as Ms. Cornwell stated, the study was done in 2019 based on counts we had done in 2018. They are projected forward based on percentage provided by Del Dot that's accepted statewide is how they do the studies. Some would argue that some of the roads and traffic is getting better. If we were to count 2021, I'd argue that they'd either be the same or even less of what was done in 2019. So it would be one of the disadvantages of counting this year, but they are projected forward enough that accounts for that growth. So that's why we don't keep recounting to answer that question. As far as some of the numbers you're seeing, the study does look at delays at intersections. DRBA stance is, as Mr. McKay had mentioned, was do not interrupt the flow of the ferry. That was their biggest stance of the entire process. We went three months back and forth with DRBA to come up with the appropriate signal timing to keep the green status for what it goes. And it's looking about a 60 second, if I remember last, I heard a 60 second green cycle on Freeman Highway. And then there's about 15, 30 seconds on the side roads to then go across the traffic. Part of the issues with the signal agreement that Ms. Cornwall has brought up is that it is a five party agreement. Del Dot, DRBA, City of Lewis, Showfield, Gibbs are the five parties that are all part of that that agreement. And so when it's all said and done, Del Dot's gonna own and operate the signal. It will be interconnected with the rest of their signals along King's Highway so that the traffic management center, TMC, if you've ever heard that abbreviation, manages signals. They'll be able to see what's happening real time along King's Highway. A lot of the delays you're seeing in that report is due to a single lane King's Highway. That's how it was analyzed. King's Highway is well known as being dualized. When, I've heard different dates, I'll believe it when I finally see it. What the final configuration is still to be determined. I'm sure you guys have heard some of those conversations probably been brought up to speed as far as this goes. When King's Highway is dualized, the, the delays become significantly less on King's Highway. Um, so that right now it may take you, if you catch, if you catch the ferry and the school at the wrong time, it may take you twenty, thirty minutes to finally get to Wawa. Once everything's done, the times work out, you should go get through there in five, ten minutes tops, kind of like you're, you're expected to. So. Um, the, the signal was recognized, the half flaws and it worked with DRVA, Del Dot. Um, so it may not a hundred percent answer your question, but that's kind of what the study showed. That's what Del Dot accepted and approved. That's what DRBA accepted or approved. And then there's a final traffic letter that says here are the requirements and those requirements were the signalization of King's Highway. Um, and we've gotten through all those plans and design. Right now we're just waiting for the final reviews. I don't know. I know Emery's here. I don't know if she's seen their draft. For the city's behalf yet, but I do know they are soon we're receiving them on with the developers as well. Hopefully answer your question, uh, Mr. F, but I'm not entirely sure if I did.
Mr. Lardner, um, it's been a while since we talked.
Been a long while, yes, sir.
I don't remember back then because it was unclear what the connection was going to be. You know, there was a lot of sentiment. Uh, how was Showfield and points back off of Gil's Neck Road factored in in the numbers?
So the, the, our traffic generation, our trip generation accounted for trips coming from. Uh, Gil's Neck Road, sure, my memory lapse there, through the subdivision, so some of that traffic, I want to say less than five percent is, was assumed to kind of cut through that area. Um, so we've accounted for that traffic. Del Dot gave us all those projections. Del Dot's one that gives us all those numbers of what to use for the study. I would say about five percent they assume kind of came up, um, through that area and to the Monroe and Freeman Hobby intersection.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the point that you're making is that we're basing the analysis on Del Dot's numbers. This, these are not out of whole cloth. These are numbers that Del Dot abides by and are the basis for making the decisions.
Right, we count, they review the counts and they tell us, okay, basically counts, here are your projections, here's your future growth. Here is where your trips are going. They give us the distribution to, from and where. Um, and that was all done as part of the study. Um, that was, like I said, previously reviewed and approved by Del Dot and, and. Understand, many of the commission members weren't present when that first came through, but, but that body did have a chance to review and ask the questions, um, of that.
But Commissioner, I think your point is that both Freeman Highway and Gil's Net are going to be parking lots. Yes. For the foreseeable future.
At least the next five years. I'm not gonna tell a lie. King's Highway, still I've not heard a true design data of, of when it's actually going to start construction, everything else. I've heard twenty twenty eight, but again, that's.
Yeah, I think Dartmouth and Route One, which is part of the expansion, is not in the next five-year plan. It's in the second five-year plan. But it's not, that means construction could be ten years.
Ten years, that right, correct.
Freeman will remain single end.
Freeman's dual is, oh, Freeman after the split, the last I heard, and again, there's different rumors out there, is what, uh, Delos considering is. It'll be dual lanes up till you get the split to go into the City of Lewis. It'll be a lane drop somewhere in there. So then it'll be single lane from that point all the way out to the ferry. Um, but that's not a lot of your biggest traffic. It's when you finally get to the merge there to Lewis. That's where the, the traffic begins to bottom out bonus. And that's where the dualization begins heading out of the city and then is coming into the city.
And that, does the traffic study, uh, assume that there will be no, uh, a gate across, uh, between Showfield?
That's correct.
And, uh, uh, when you said, uh, it did assume that there might be some people cutting through from Gil's Neck. Is it also taking into account residents of Showfield using that road to get to King's Highway?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so I apologize for the somewhat rudimentary question.
It's fine, yes, sir.
Mr. Lardner, what, what, so Freeman and what? What's the exact coordinates of this proposed light?
Freeman Highway, Monroe Avenue.
Row, right there.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, sir.
One question. What's the sequencing from a timing perspective of the light versus the construction of the project?
So the entrance improvements will be done at the same time as the site begins construction. The signaling installation will be at the discretion, will be at Del Dot's discretion when they put it in because they're responsible for all the above ground work of that signal. And all those details will be in the signal agreement, which again, Mayor Council have a chance to review because they are signatories of that. And then that information will come to light. I have not seen the draft, um, but in talking to DRBA, we're all under same, understanding is. Um, DRBA is doing work on their roadway. We're doing road work. We want to be at the same time. We actually want to use the same contractor, same everything, a perfect world. And then right behind that, Del I would come right behind and do all the above ground signal work. All those details are supposed to be in the same agreement, but again, Miss Panetta, I have not seen the agreement, so I cannot answer the question, but. Uh, the intent is to do all the improvements at the very beginning of, of the project.
Well, because as you pointed out, with everything else that's up in the air. Traffic is going to be, I mean, traffic is bad now. Traffic is going to get worse. And if there isn't a signal there. And as the chairman pointed out, you're crossing that with bicycles is already dangerous. You started in turning traffic. On top of it. Um, if the light isn't in when the first houses go in, it's a problem.
Uh, understood. Again, that, that's Delos discretion. I, that, I have no say of that. I like to think the signal goes in the same time everything else does. But we do not control that, unfortunately, you all do not control that either, but we hope that's what the sooner agreement is going to say.
But I think we can make a recommendation, not a condition, but a recommendation that the signal has to be, uh, in, in place. As construction is underway, as, as Monroe Avenue is made passable, uh, since it is a construct, essentially a construction road now. Once that's made passable, we, I think it would be who us to make a recommendation, Mayor City Council, that they, uh, do their best to get Del Dot. And the developer and the other four parties to come to an agreement to get that light in there as soon as possible.
Agreed. I mean, that's because right now there's nothing about sequencing in the plan, so it's important.
Well, but they don't, as he said, they don't control the sequencing, but we can get the city hopefully to exert some influence on Del Dot. Because we all recognize with the, I, I've forgotten the count we had last on Gil's Neck Road, but it was some phenomenal number in five figures of traffic. A day and it still continued to grow because there's been other development and we know. Between the signal light on Monroe and the signal light at the high school, there's another development going in, maybe two. Um, you know, it, it, I'm going to start a helicopter service. Let me just let you.
Mr. Chairman, just a data point in this study. It says unsignal. Someone going northbound on.
Watch your computer.
Monroe. Well, um. Experience, midday Saturday, we'll experience one thousand four hundred and thirty eight seconds of delay. Before they make, that's with all the lanes in, ready to go.
And the light in.
No light.
Oh.
Before the light gets better with the light. If the light is not there, that's what you'll see.
Well, we, we'll make that recommendation that. Hang on, hang on. She went to get you some paper towels.
She's getting paper towels, yeah.
Or something.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I remember it all when we were all talking about this years ago. There was considerable feeling that it was better to have the light for the safety of everybody. Even though it might slow things down.
It, it was split, it was split fifty fifty. You know, when, when you look at it, we, we argued it from multiple different, different points. Um, when you look at. Traffic signals, there's what's called traffic warrants for traffic signals and there's eight warrants you have to meet and you have to meet. Three or four of them before they'll say yes to signal. We found we only met like two of them. Uh, one of them was, um. The, the pedestrian traffic was getting closed and kind of met the signal. We didn't meet the four-hour requirement. We didn't meet the twenty-four hour, all the different things we didn't meet. So when it was already decided, DRBA didn't want the signal because again, they didn't want to interrupt the flow. Developer didn't want the signal. Again, that, that comes to more costs and some other things thereabouts. The, the city wanted the signal and Del Don wanted signal because they recognize the pedestrian crossing is kind of what the trailhead created. So after multiple discussions, you're right, Mr. Crosby, that's what ultimately decided was yes. At the end of the day, it's in the best interest to install the signal and that's what was great. DRBA finally did that. We said, yes, we're going to put in the signal. Regardless of what the study said, it was a study, I agree with, with your statement of timing. Uh, but the study, the warrant, everything else said the signal wasn't warranted, but after, I mean, there was many, many conversations and many separate meetings outside this body. That was a great, the signal is required and I agree with, with Spina's saying, it comes down to timing. But that's where all that should be accounted for in the agreement. That's where, once again, we're able to look at it from the developers. The city's going to get a chance to look at it. Mayor Council, I'm sure is going to review it in some type of. I, I don't know if it'd be exactly sessionally, formally said, I imagine that everyone have a chance at least kind of look to see what it, what it says, what the requirements are. And I think Mr. McKay's approach is, is a relatively fair request. They just made a recommendation when Mayor Council. Does get the signal agreement that they try to have it be installed as early in the process as, as can be. Um, and I, I think that's about the fairest way to answer that question and the approach.
Chairman, I, I had a follow-up, um. Is, I realize that we can't put a, a condition on your, your previous comment, but are we allowed to? Uh, put in a condition or recommendation to have a tiered opening to not open the access to, to Freeman Highway side. Until that traffic light is there. And sometimes, you know, there are conditions that are made that are in stages for the stages of the development.
I'm going to turn, I'm going to turn to our city solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So generally, when you place a condition on a subdivision approval, it has to be a condition that. Addresses some health, welfare, safety concern that's been identified in the records. So to the extent you're going to put a condition on that would. Phase the opening or require the, the opening on Freeman not be until the light is installed. You have to be able to look at some record evidence and say, here's the evidence that suggests that this is a better approach than opening it at, at some other time. So if you have that sort of evidence on the record, you could make that sort of a condition. But if not, um, you know, I, I advise certainly against, against making that sort of a recommendation.
I just, I dare say that the evidence is pretty straightforward that making a turn, a left-hand turn at this point off Monroe. Um, most of the time is a pretty death-defying act. That, you know, there is a public safety component there, certainly.
Uh, to answer that question, I'd have to go and pull the accident records and, and find out what, what accidents are there and I understand, you know.
That there's not much traffic coming out of there now, right, right?
And, and so the question is, okay, where, where's the traffic going, you know, you know? And I don't have, I don't remember the exact splits. How much is going to make left? How much is going to actually go straight? Go right? And again, i- i- it's going to come down to timing and like, like everything else. Okay, when the ferry lets out, it lets out. In the summertime, it's pulsating every hour. When you get in the winter time, it's pulsating every two hours. And traffic impact studies, the case not everyone's familiar with the traffic impact study, it looks at the worst fifteen minutes of the study. It doesn't look at, you know, it's not that way all the time. It is only for the worst fifteen minutes in that entire study. So while that thousand second delay may be there, it's only, might be for thirty seconds at worst fifteen minutes. And again, it could have come at a perfect timing where the school let out at the same time and the ferry let out at the same time. And we've had that conversation, hey, can we coordinate the schedules? And we want to get into that, that discussion as well. So if you're there seven o'clock in the morning on Saturday, you're going to have no problem going whichever direction you want to go to. If it's ten o'clock on a summer Saturday, you're most like everybody else. The locals know, don't go out. At that time, you kind of delay when you're going to go about and you kind of alter your patterns and everything else. So I understand what you're saying. Um, delaying building permits, CEOs, that's, that's a possibility, but also has a real time. Um, issue when the developers, because they, they've got, you know, to do the work and then they can't sell the houses, build the houses. City's not getting some of their parts of it, so there's that fine balance between the two. So I understand your concern. Monroe Avenue coming out city is doing just fine without any traffic. I mean, yes, we're adding eighty-four houses, eighty-four houses in the grand scheme of things. Not really that much more traffic in that entire quarter. Um.
Now, but going forward, there'll be actually the traffic on Monroe coming out of the develop.
I know what you're saying, but.
But, you know, without laboring the point, and, and it's not your applicant's, uh. Cause, but anyone, there are anyone to go out there and watch with the bike traffic as, um, the commission, the, the chairman said. Crossing Freeman Highway.
I don't.
And that, that's the real health and safety issue for me.
I don't dispute that, Miss Panetta, and I would make the argument of, A, Del Dot should have put something in there where they put, put the trailhead in there. Because I guess they didn't think people would illegally cross. The other part is they are illegally crossing that intersection. Call what it is. That is not an intersection for bikes pedestrians. They're doing it all day long because it's a quick shortcut. They don't feel like going down the extra half mile to the Cape Pen Loop and crossing. They want to cross there. So it comes down to public education. It could come down to police enforcement or everything else. So while the signal's the answer, there's other answers to deal with that, but let's be, the truthful answer is this. While I agree it's. Unsafe, it's unsafe because people are illegally crossing and not doing the things that pedestrian bicycles are supposed to do. And, and that's a different habit that's not part of the application. So while I understand the concern is there.
That's why I said.
Yep. So I just wanted to point out that, that, that there is the concern there, but there's ways to break that concern, that habit besides just putting the signal. We talked about putting a hawk system up and really goes in the interim before this project came along, because the project could get approved. And the project may not get built for another two years. They could put it on the highest, whatever. I'm not saying they will, they won't. There's timelines in the code. This is when you get to start. Doesn't change the situation, doesn't change the growth, everything else. And then we've talked about the hawk system, which you've seen the flashing lights that down, on down Route One. Everyone said, no, we want to do that because you're coming across the crest of the bridge. So again, I understand everyone's new, we, we, we've kind of had a lot of these conversations before, but. Glad to at least, you know, answer the question of everything else. So there's been a lot of discussions about. Things we can do to address, you know, things Mr. Panetta brought up, where everyone's kind of agreeing to signal. Going up in some cases, the sooner the signal goes up, the better it is for everybody, which is kind of odd to hear, kind of promote the development because of that, what allows that signal to get installed. Because truthfully, without Old Town of White's Pond, that signal's not going in. The, the, the subdivision is kind of what's helped drive in that signal to make the intersection become what it wants to become.
I think it was clear that DRBA was not in, in favor of any signal until the studies were done, until this matured, if you will. But let me remind the commissioners, as we consider this matter and make a recommendation tonight, if we do, which I hope we do. We can attach conditions that will go to Mayor City Council, but we have to explain our vote tonight as well. So we're, we're all thinking about the health, safety and welfare of the city. We have to have some empirical or other data to support considerations that we make. But there's nothing to prevent us from making recommendations to Mayor City Council. Whether it's in their power to impose those on a developer, both, uh, city solicitor and. Uh, the council will have to evaluate that in part because this is a project that they, that none of us control exclusively. There are five parties to this and Del Dot is the big mover and shaker in this. And trying to get Del Dot to move, I don't want to describe it how bad that, how hard that is, but Del Dot is, is the difficult element in this process. Notwithstanding what I just said, you can make a motion at the appropriate time to include a condition about the timing of the development versus the light. I think we can also make the recommendation that we want to expedite as soon as possible the light. For reasons that Mr. Panetta has mentioned, for reasons that we all observe every day with people crossing. Whether it be legal or illegal, we need to get that intersection fixed before Monroe Avenue, after Monroe Avenue is done, when Monroe Avenue is done. We need to fix that intersection. It's not going to get any better. And we need to, I think, part of our role is to recognize a problem and if we see a solution. Now that we've got DRBA on board, which was a struggle, I think we need to take advantage of it. So, um, I think we can address this issue. Uh, Commissioner Happerton, do you have any other points you want to make on this at the moment? All right. Are there other questions or issues that you'd like to address to the engineer or to each other or to council?
Yes.
Please.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Lardner. Speak a little slower.
I apologize.
Thank you. But I do have some, some questions and issues. Uh, when we were looking at the preliminary plan, I had concerns about the houses backing to the highway. And I thought I remembered that there was to be a berm and or fencing. That would help, uh, ameliorate the noise, the lights, the fumes, et cetera, of the traffic passing by this site. But in fact, on the plan, what I see instead is a swale going down from the houses. And, but yes, there's going to be some landscaping, but, um, there's really no amelioration of. Of the effects of that traffic on the homes that will back onto Freeman Highway. Can you address that at all?
I, I'm trying to remember, Miss Rose, about the fence, the berm. It's not coming to mind again. That was a couple, a couple of years ago.
Yes.
We do, uh, we are planning a buffer to screen the houses from Freeman Highway. Um, the swell is necessary because we are not allowed to drain. Off, off the shared use path in the DRB's route, which we had to create the swell to capture that runoff. Um, so the, the buffer is what we proposed during, it's not giving the perfect noise buffering. But it is similar to the other houses that are along Freeman Highway that, that backed to it. So there will be some tree landscaping to provide, at least a visual. Um, break from the highway, um, but not exactly the noise mitigation you may be, uh, looking for and asking about.
Um, following on to Ms. Moses, um, on the plans, you show that the fence there is to remain in place.
Yes, sir.
Yet, um, that fence is merely a steel post. Yet, um, that fence is merely a steel post four by four uh fence. It is not split rail like the rest of them. And it's covered in vines, which actually provides some buffering now. However, with the the grading you're doing, I don't see how that is going to stay in place.
It may be temporarily moved and then reset. Um, I'd have.
But the remainder of it uh between Bay uh showing blank Bay, what's the development next door?
Bakers.
Bay Breeze and the remainder of it going down to Schofield is all concrete posts, split rail. So I certainly don't think we want to put back up steel posts, four by four metal mesh fence there.
Just a a conversation with the byways coordinator, and I realize this isn't on the byway, but I asked her about some of these questions and one of the things that they're stressing along the King's Highway Quarter is the use of things like the um split rail fencing and stuff like that, um, trying to maintain the kind of the character that's there. The other thing that she mentioned was uh the idea of having more than one line of trees. Uh, but they have a whole group that talks with, you know, that deals with this more specifically and is maybe beyond this group. Um, but but I I would endorse the idea of the split rail, if there were a way to do it, if you're going to have to tear the fence out. Um, just because it will go better. In fact, my sense is along Gills Neck Road, there's a lot of that concrete post, split rail fencing. And I don't.
Yes, the entire, the entire. Gills Neck Road does have, but has a a fair amount of it.
One of the, one of the points that she was making was people coming over the bridge from um, from the ferry, this is going to be their first view of Lewis when they come over the bridge. You know, it should be a a nice looking place saying, hey, this is, this is a beautiful place.
But to answer the landscape, we'll go to landscaping question first. So the um Parks and Recreation Subcommittee did review the landscaping plan and open space plans in January of this year. They did approve those landscaping plans, open space plans, that's in those packs. So they they have reviewed those. Uh, as far as defense goes, you're talking about the upper left corner, Mr. Panetta? If I'm looking at that skirt, if I'm looking at any screen, sorry, I'm pointing over there because I can see that one. You're looking at that one. Um.
Site number one to twenty.
Oh, that DRBA's right away fence, we plan on keeping that. Something we have to, may have to take someone out to do something great, and we'll put it back. But that's DRBA's fence that they installed as part of their right away. If that's the fence you're talking about.
Yeah, it's, I mean.
That's a DRBA question as far as fence goes, because we don't maintain that fence. They do. And and that's, again, that's
Thank you.
outside of our area on that fence replacement, installing fences, that's something you even want to entertain and maintain. Um.
I thought that was on. Isn't that on your property?
There's no fence on our property from Monroe Avenue West. Any fence would be Monroe Avenue towards the ferry.
And on this topic, it's, I'm just having a hard time seeing, how many feet are there from Freeman Highway to the rear property line of the homes? Like, is it enough room to have a berm and appropriate landscaping?
Twenty-five feet.
I'm sure. Sure.
That's from the right, right from right away line. But that's where we can stop. We can't go past right away lines. It's twenty, you have twenty-five feet to work with. That's where the swell, because we need a swell to go in there. And then we have the buffer, the landscape, the screening, all fit within that twenty-five foot width.
And um how how large is the swale? How wide?
Two foot flat bottom, and I don't know how deep it is.
Because I do see in the Parks and Rec recommendations, it says that they wanted the trees more than three feet apart to establish root zones. And I'm just wondering if this is enough space to do that.
It's enough space to install the what the plant, what the uh Parks and Recreation Committee asked for and the squalls. We can make all that work and not affect the trees.
And I believe the three feet was from the back of the sidewalk along the roads to allow for that. It wasn't along Freeman Highway. It was for the street trees. Um, because they wanted to make sure there was at least enough room between the curb and then the front of the sidewalk, that there was enough green space for the trees to to grow. So it's not really, that comment was regarding the street trees and not the trees on Freeman Highway.
Can we go back to Vice Chair Modra have some additional questions, please?
Um, my, the balance of my questions really have to do with the landscaping.
Okay.
You, do you have your designer here, my engineer?
I do not have my landscape architect here with me, but I will try to pretend to be one for the evening by looking at his plans.
Um, ponds one and two basically are have the same plant material in them. There is, there's something like five different species being used, and there's literally thousands of plants. I would strongly recommend that there be more diversification of that plant material. Uh, my second comment has to do with um one of the uh tree species selected, the Acer sicarum, the sugar maple. Uh, this climate is now too warm for that tree. That tree likes cold winters and cool summers, and it just will not thrive here. So I strongly recommend that that be changed.
Melanie, what was the species?
Sugar maple.
Uh, a, another kind of oak or sycamore would be a good substitution. Um, and on the landscape on the street trees, why is the planting so haphazard? It seems like
There's a question.
Some areas, there, there's a regular sequencing of trees, and then all of a sudden it just, it stops.
There's, there's, it's like some missing teeth.
Yeah.
A bunch of gaps in the, in the, in what looks like a pattern.
I can't answer that one.
Okay.
I know we were trying to space the trees because we don't know where driveway is going to be right now. So we're trying to figure out where to put a tree without knowing where the driveways are to to allow homeowners to have options to flip a house left or right. That may be part of the reason why some of the trees are. I know the one street, the more kind of on opposite sides, you get a little more linear on a couple of the streets. Um, I'd have to kind of ask that question.
Well, I'd like to see it. I'd like to see it in planned view, just so that you generate a number that's in a budget.
Well, I can say we could commit to the number of trees that are shown on the landscape plan as a reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Committee, if it makes sense to move some trees around. I'll necessarily see that being such a a a big deal. I know, um, when we work with, um, not this developer, but when we did Canary Creek, we kind of, before doing the planning, kind of worked with um Parks and Rec, some other stuff that we made some changes kind of on on that pace. But if I don't think it's an issue, we quit the number of trees, if it makes sense to move some around, I'll see why it wouldn't make sense to move some around before we plant them, because at the end of the day, developer wants as nice a community as this body does. Um.
Well, the the issue really is, there should be more street trees. I mean, if 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 the sequencing that you're using, when when you do show trees, is carried consistently through the street system, there's going to be a lot more street trees, which um I would certainly prefer to see.
I think what she's looking for is street trees between lots fifty and fifty-five, sixty, sixty-four and seventy-two and seventy-seven, because those are the the three spots the trees are missing. So I think that's what you're looking for is to add trees in those areas.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I think we can handle that with a recommendation, with a condition. But you you may be nervous a minute ago. You talk about flipping the houses. I thought, oh, my God, they moved in and they're flipping houses.
While, while we're talking about trees, one of the things we had discussed quite a bit at the last meeting was um, and it's on your construction plan, uh, four oh one, the trees in the eastern corner.
Yes, sir.
Under DA. Um, and I see that they will remove.
Yes, sir.
Um. So I'm, I'm a little confused as to.
We, we did discuss that during the, during the meeting, and we we talked about the commission. What we said we'd do is we'd have a certified landscape architect and certified arborists go out and visit those areas to determine if they could be saved. And we had a landscape architect go out, registered landscape architect, certified arborist, submit two independent reports to the Parks and Recreation Committee as part of this landscape plan review in in January. And that body agreed with both the landscape architect and certified arborists that that area, given the invasive vines and everything else, that those trees were not salvageable, and it made more sense to remove those trees and replant them. And it provided a better product than trying to save uh the little bit of species that was in that area. That's why we show this plan as being.
Yeah, in the far corner, the area marked DI, you're saving those trees. And it's part of the same clump, and it has the same invasive vines on it. And I do recognize some of those trees are too far gone, but it seems like it was selective to not impact those lots.
If that's the case, then we can remove that the other side and and do the same thing and to make it and clean it all up.
Well, that's the commission's decision.
Well, we can take a recommendation as we consider conditions and see what we do. But um are there other questions on uh Vice Chair? Are there other questions?
Just for clarification, they show up, um, it's L. Those aren't on the property. If you, if I'm reading the property boundary right, that corner, I think, is part of something else.
Can you zoom that in? Is there a way to zoom?
Oh, wait, Ms. Ms. Cornwall's correct. Those trees on that other side is actually owned by the state of Delaware. Thank you.
Yeah, they're part of the um, the air, because it's just to the right, you know, to the, to the left, which is the west of the trail. Those are part of the, the bike path.
Part of the right away, part of the state of Delaware. We don't own that land, so therefore we couldn't.
I have, I have a couple of questions. Um, going back to the traffic thing for a second, somewhere in there, and I've been reading too many things. It's all mushing together. Sorry. I read something about a right away, a bicycle path and a turn right lane, come out of Monroe. Is there room in the right away for that? Are you going to have something like that, like a a bike lane on Monroe, turning right?
No, we added a sidewalk to get from.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't find any. I don't remember where it was, you know.
There was, there was a, there was a question about a bike lane. The bike lane doesn't fit coming on Monroe. So there's a sidewalk. So the truck head has a shared use path connection to the truck head to get that intersection. So you don't have to get on Monroe Avenue to get to that intersection. So you actually come through the parking lot, through the truck head, and then you'll pop right out on the corner of the intersection, and that's where you could go. Also, we don't have a bike lane on Monroe Avenue itself coming out of the city.
How about the other way?
We have a, not, we don't bike lane from our side either going out.
Okay. Um, a couple of questions about stormwater, so on. Um. Not an engineer. My sense is the general plan is to capture water, store it temporarily, send it ultimately to White's Pond.
Correct.
Down into the canal.
Yes, sir.
Um, is White's Pond also the receiving waters for the Schofield?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, looking at the elevations and some sea level rise stuff that I've done for other cases in the planning commission, there is a time down the road when this will probably engage in the flood plain. Given some things that we've learned um from the Delaware Geological Survey, you know, groundwater levels are going to start to rise underneath this whole area as the sea level is rising. Um, do you see that in any way impacting the functioning of stormwater system?
Not for the.
So I guess, I guess the one, one easy question would be, you know, what's, what's the seasonal high water table? What's the elevation of seasonal high water table?
Four point seven.
And what's the requirement of the wet ponds? Do they need that? Do they need that two foot?
No, dry, if anything dry has to have the separation.
So as the groundwater goes up.
Or by ponds will be wet.
The pond will just fill.
More, won't go any more than the permanent pool.
But as the groundwater, if if through time, it's the Delaware Geological Survey.
Still can't go higher than the permanent pool because permanent pool is where water starts to enter the facility.
Okay, well, okay. Okay.
If it was a dry pond, infiltration pond, by all those other things, then yes, I would see what you're saying is it would fill the pond up, and it wouldn't really work as function with a wet pond. It'll still function because the wet pond is designed to hold a permanent pool at a certain elevation. And the groundwater is what allows to keep that wet. So what happened is the fluctuation of the wet pond will decrease as the groundwater increases.
Pond will be full more of the time.
Correct.
Um, uh, Mr. Saliba is here in the audience. He and I were neighbors for a number of years over on the beach. The, the, the elevations over there are low enough that there are a number of stormwater pipes that now hold water a lot of the time. I guess what I'm worried about is, you know, will that become a problem here as well? I mean, I realize the County Conservation District doesn't factor in sea level rise. And I'm just hoping there's a way that we're keeping that in mind moving forward, because everything that we've been hearing, it's a, it's a dynamic system. Levels are going to change. They're not going to stay the same over time. And ultimately, it will affect the performance of the stormwater system.
I don't foresee that being an issue. I don't foresee it being an issue here, but what happens is fifty, seventy-five years, did projections change? They very well could. I know the numbers changed from ten years ago. They kind of put in what daddy, with daddy you see and and everything else. So
Right.
Um, kind of a, kind of, we we've looked at it, um, but there's no way I can guarantee you anything and um for for that perspective.
Okay. Um. Long ago, there were concerns about corner lots and setbacks.
Hmm.
Um. Looking through the map, it looked like some of them were still set up with side yards in some cases, and I just wanted somebody, Janelle or Charlie, to confirm that in fact that was all done properly.
Yep, I have reviewed the the setbacks and they are all include compliant.
Right, because ju- just looking, I mean, just a quick analysis of the maps, and maybe I don't understand the code well enough, and I, I, I'm sorry if I misjudged what a corner is. But there were a number of lots in here that looked like they were corners based on being right at the intersection of one of the roads, and it looked like there was a side setback on one, one side.
So to quickly go into the plan, so lot fifty-two is a corner lot. That means both front yards. Lot forty-three is a corner lot, but we did receive a waiver for that particular lot to have a side yard on the one side.
Fifty-eight, fifty-nine and twenty.
I haven't gone through this yet. Oh.
Fifty-eight is not a corner lot. Um, because Haywagon Lane isn't, is a drive aisle and not a road. Um. Twenty is not a corner lot um because it backs up to the open space. Twenty-one is a corner lot, but twenty-one, sixty-nine, fifty-two and forty-three are the true corner lots and um, they all have the two front yards except for forty-three because the code allows for um, one of the front yards to come down to a side yard setback.
So twenty, let's talk about that for a second. That's a big lot. Um. Just judging from the way the setback is set up on the map I'm looking at here, that that house could be very close to the to the trail. Am I right? Am I reading that right? Does that make sense for such a large hut?
So that lot twenty has been an interesting one of all of these, because it has to be certain average with requirements, death requirements, and Ms. Cornwall, we went back and forth a little bit, tried to get this lot to work it out. And this is about the smallest we could make this lot. Um, so. And this is about the smallest we could make this lot. Um, so while I understand your concern, the lot size itself is about the same. It's twelve thousand. The other ones are ten or some twelves. So it's not like it's overly egregious. It just looks much bigger because it's wider and narrower. This is kind of what happens. It's kind of like a pie shape or anything. So the house is going to be skewed more closer to lot nineteen. There may be a, a shed on the side or a, um, detached garage, something like that. But the primary residence is going to be further towards lot nineteen because if you pinch too far to back to get a decent footprint, um, of your house. But I understand your concern.
I'm imagining some really cool shaped house.
Well, you never know. You know, it'd be really cool, you know, to have something like that, but again.
You want to put a bid in now or?
Thanks. All right. Fair enough. Thank you. Um, uh, on one of the maps, and then maybe I just misread it. Haywagon Lane. Was, maybe I, it is to be maintained by the HOA, not by the city.
HOA.
I have read which way the, the label was.
It's, it's a private road to drive access to be maintained by the HOA to provide access to the community mail center and the pool and the pool house.
Is there a reason for that rather? Cause all the other streets are dedicated, obviously. That, that was the decision to not have that dedicated?
It's a single, it's a single use that benefits the HOA only. I don't know why the city would even want to own and maintain something that does benefit, that does benefit. They benefit more than one, but to me, I don't think it's something that the mayor council would want to consider to own and maintain in perpetuity when it's really for private open space use only.
That, that was why I asked. I was, that's how I read that. And I was thinking, we don't need to be maintaining.
Yeah.
That's why I asked.
That's, that's why is as proposed as the HOA will maintain it.
The last question has to do with lots forty-four, forty-nine. I think they're the ones right along the pond.
Yes, sir.
So, um, can you explain, you know, we have this new wetland buffer thing? I just want to make sure we're not crouching on that wetland buffer.
We provided a fifty-foot wetland buffer on that side. So those lot lines kind of ride the wetland buffers. We do provide the wetland buffer. I don't know if you changed your dimensions since then, but this has been the same width that we've stated since the original.
Can your limited disturbance crosses that buffer? I don't, I couldn't tell from the map what the, what the measurements were, but I know there are differences in the two.
There might be a little bit grading necessary, but then it'll grow in its natural state and then, then react as, as the buffer.
Can you speak to the whole concept of the request? And I don't remember who made the request for. Some sort of more involved stormwater program than just sheet flow to the pond and why you chose to do sheet flow to the pond for the backyards.
The sheet flow to ponds is actually the best treatment you could have because it's going to go, because, um. The news should get picked up through the buffer before the pond. There's, there's no other treatment that provides as good of, of a treatment as, as that practice through the.
I think there was some sort of bioswale suggestion or something like that.
A bioswale is going to concentrate the flow. So at that point in time, you didn't introduce erosion and further grading in that area. So having a sheet flow. The only runoff you're going to have is a couple of downspouts in the back, which is going to drain through the whole rear yard before it gets to the buffer. So when you look at the number, the dissipation and amount of runoff of that area is going to be very minimal when it finally hits that proper line. Might go ten foot into, into the buffer. Um, so when you read the code today, a twenty-five foot buffer generally gives you all your, um, detention time necessary to. Uh, filter out your nitrogen and phosphorus, decrease the, the flow and everything else. So that's why the. Sheet flow practices is actually more preferred than, than anything else because it's not a concentrated flow, um, from that standpoint. And that's why we chose to stick with the, the sheet flow approach.
Okay, thank you.
Charlie, do you want to comment on that? Is that?
I just misread the way the question was.
So I'm just going to say that since Charlie's not at the mic, that he agreed with the applicant's engineer, that it's the best practice for stormwater management.
Um, I just want to say thank you for answering my questions. That's all I have.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
John?
Um, I have a quick question. The open space in this plan, the circle where the trees aren't being disturbed behind the pool house, right? That's the. Am I reading that right? That's the open space for the residents.
That, that's the existing tree stand that's there, that's to remain under, under disturbance. If a tree falls, what they, they clean that up. There's a little bit on the lot that is to be preserved on the lot, but that's tree stand is going to remain in its existing condition.
How do the residents access that area?
They can either go, so, um, looking on the screens around you, they have access to it from the pool through Haywagon Lane. Um, they have access to it from pond one.
There and just walk behind.
Well, they, they park at the, the pool, pool house so they could walk there and, and they could enjoy the wooded area for whatever they wanted to.
So you have like a path going back there to it, or is it just walk across the lawn?
So on the other side, there's a walking path that goes from lots eighty-five and then it connects to the pool. And then that walking path then goes around the stormwater mound and instrument facility to the west. So the people from lots like fifty to like fifty-eight, they can just walk through their backyards and access the open space. But there is a, there is a, um, a sidewalk, a walking path that goes from eighty-five to the west and then it'll connect down to the pool. And the pool house, and then it connects around the, the, um, stormwater management pond.
Okay. And then eventually they'll have to go off the path to get into the woods. We don't have a path directly to the woods, but there's at least a walking path to get in that vicinity.
All right. Thank you for explaining.
Actually, just want to make a comment about open space. We had a conversation this morning in the annexation meeting about the configuration of open space. And I had this map in mind when I said some of the things that I said in the meeting. We can calculate. A total, perhaps contiguous open space number of square feet or acreage or whatever. But if you look at where it is, it sort of wraps itself around every one of the parcels. It's, it's not really very useful, open space. I realize. We don't require more. I'm just going on record here as saying we need to do a better job of, of specifying more specifically what we want with open space. Cause I think it, it kind of gets lost in this plat plane. I'm not, I'm not, it's just a comment. I'm not.
No, I understand. And, and there, there's many different schools of, of thought as far as open space. Some people prefer just to have some open land behind them because they don't have a house right in their backyard. They get a little bit of, a little bit of separation. Other communities want to have more of that contiguous things to enjoy. And you're going to have a vision. Mr. Hester's going to have a vision. Mr. Nervous is going to have a vision. I'm going to have a different vision and.
We had this very discussion.
And, and even after you move to a community, you're going to have a different vision of how to maintain it over time. Because when you move to a community, you may have kids at a certain age, so that open space means something in A. Well, they're going to grow up in ten years. That open space wants to be something B. So that's why I kind of, I've always been a big proponent of what I call the multifunctional open area. You give a big two hundred foot by three hundred foot field. It's football in the fall. It's lacrosse in the spring. It's whatever it wants to be as people grow up. Cause it allows it to mature and change. When you start to try to shoehorn certain things in there, it's great for one group, but it's not group for all groups. So that's the other thing I kind of envisioned is, is. As my kids are growing up and they change things, I've used it for one piece in, in a year or two, and then it was totally different a year eighteen, but it allowed that area to mature and change and modify. So when you, when you do that, keep that in mind as well as that, that open space is going to change over time and every community member is going to change over time because everyone's life is going to be different at, at different times. So I understand what you're trying to say and it is definitely an interesting conversation.
I'm going to make a, a public invitation to you to come and join us and talk specifically about that idea. I think that's a fabulous idea.
I'd also like to clarify too, with the open space. You know, the idea of a field that is great, that, that's for everyone and multi-use, but I'm having a hard time envisioning that if there is a grove of trees in the middle. And this seems to be the only, I'm not reading this wrong, right? That is the only open space that's not a stormwater pond.
Well, it's correct. And the reason why those trees, that we've asked it to keep the trees there, there's also, um, some other things there. So there is some area to play. Just again, this developer kind of had a different mind for the open space, kind of expecting. The tenants that had bought in Schofield and how to be similar in here where they have different open space needs. They have a different vision for the community, which is why we don't have that particular case in play. And it was intended on purpose not to take those trees down in that area, um, which is why they've stayed there. So we try to massage everything together and try to integrate everything together. That's kind of how this open space vision and. If you would have seen the original plan, actually where Haywagon Road is shown, that was actually a road at one time. Those open spaces were bisected by that road. So there's after talking to the planning commission, um, going through the process, developer went back, so you know what? We can change it a little bit. And that's kind of how we were able to integrate everything together to make it one big contiguous piece. And again, they have a different open space vision for this community. Which is fine.
More trees is a positive.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
While we're still talking about those center trees, um, on the sediment erosion control plans, there was an SAP around the, the, um. Edge of the, the tree canopies. What does that stand for? Sensitive area protection?
Pretty much don't touch the trees. There's a orange fence. You're not allowed to go in there.
Okay, so during construction, there will be, it will be fenced off.
Correct.
At the.
At the drip line.
At the drip line. Excellent. Okay.
Commissioner Wallace, do you have any other questions at the moment? Commissioner Nirvas?
No, sir.
I'm going to go around the room. Commissioner Jensen, do you have any? Commissioner Stacy?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harper?
Thank you.
Please.
Appreciate this, including the construction. So I'm looking at one and. It's a pretty deep. Pond and by all means, I think it's well constructed from what I can understand. The sides are about a slope of four to one. Is there any protection to keep someone from? Falling in? Should we be? I would think so.
No, sir. We've gone this with Denrec. Fences have been brought up. Do not put fences up. These four to ones are designed that are traversable. If someone were to fall or go down, that's what the purpose of the safety bench is there. So that they don't go into the deep part of the pond, they would stop at that first ten foot. That's why we call it the safety bench. And that's why it's there. Off that standpoint, but they do not promote putting up fences for sure to keep people out. If you put vegetation around it, then you get root invasion in the side slopes, which then cause side slope failures and has its own different inherent risks. So. Um, having sat on that Denrec committee that rewrote these regulations for three plus years, uh, that was the final decision was, um, this is how small pond code three seventy-eight written by NRCS has the ponds. And Denrec has stated, yes, no, um, prohibitions, protections, that kind of stuff. And that's how they wish the ponds to be.
Just be grass.
Grass, correct.
Other questions, Commissioner? Yeah. Want to share any questions? All right.
Chairman, just a couple of cleanup items, if, if I can. Um, in the original discussions, we had talked about, uh, one of the conditions was that there was. The amenities were going to be noted to only be used by White's Pond. I didn't see them in the construction drawing notes.
They should be on the record plan. If they're not on the record plan, we can, these will be on the record plan to be in the HOA docs. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's like one of the conditions on the record plan.
So then it would be note, Mr. Fenata?
I missed, I missed it.
I'm pretty sure it was, but there were a lot of.
There's a couple of pages that have all the.
It's like preggo, it's in there. Squint, squint.
Page forty-one, all the conditions and the recommendations from preliminary consent were put.
And you'd see that attached there, right? I was expecting it to be incorporated into the notes on the drawing, so.
You know, they just put it on a, so all those will actually get, so page forty-one, um, has the listing of all the recommendations and requirements that came out of preliminary consent. They put that onto one of the record plan sheets. So those will actually get, um, I think it's one of the record plan sheets. So it's, it, it will be stamped as part of the final plan.
It's a V one oh five. I mean, it's in there on V one oh five.
And, and the commissioners that worried about it, we can add a specific note, we can make it. We'll renumber the notes. We'll make it one of the general notes on V one hundred specifically stating that the amenities are for the benefits of White's Pond Meadow and their invited guests. If it's that big of a concern of the commission, we can do that.
Yeah, I guess the reason why I'm saying that you, there were a lot of these into conditions that necessarily and recommendations. I mean, the recommendations didn't carry weight. So even if they're on the recording, I don't know what forces will they have.
Recorded record plan as a, as a requirement, they, they have the force law or a condition of approval.
Even the recommendations.
Not the recommendations.
That might be something that we need to, we, we should consider is the fact that there are a lot of recommendations. And even though they're printed on the end of the plans. They don't carry any weight.
Well, we'll come, we'll come to that momentarily.
Okay, and, um. One of the other recommendations was, um. Well, it's not that it was that the greens, the green, not green white on the streaks was to be wide to four and a half feet. And I noticed in the plans, it's only four feet.
What is this?
One to four and a half?
So condition for green space to be increased by moving the sidewalks to the back of the right away, as recommended by the Parks and Rec. The change would be from three feet to four and a half feet.
But you're saying the drawings reflect four feet?
Correct. So when you look at the cross section details, and that's in the.
So since the original review by the Parks and Rec Commission, this went back in January and the Parks and Rec Commission have since approved the, the plans. So I think your recommendation is older than the most current review by the Parks and Rec Commission, if that makes sense.
I'm wondering if they reconcile, I'm wondering if they reconcile the.
Were, were, were they aware?
Yeah, they looked at it and they had no problems with the, because they were providing, um, not three feet, they were providing four feet of space. So they were okay with, because again, they made the approval of the, the plans.
Commissioner, do you have any, or ex officio commissioner in the audience without a mic, unfortunately? We can get you one now, very quickly. All right. Let me suggest the following procedure, um, with your, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve or disapprove the, uh, final site plan. Once we have that, um, either approve, motion made and seconded, we'll then have discussion, which will include a delineation of amendments that we want to make to the motion. Uh, and we'll go through them in some detail to make sure we have everything we want. And when we finish the amendments, which we'll vote on separately, we'll have a collective vote, an individual vote, excuse me, on the motion as amended, whatever it is. And we have to explain our vote individually. Okay. And I'm going to ask council to help us make sure that the emotion is sufficiently clear. Given the conditions slash recommendations that we're going to be evaluating. And if we have a question about it or we're not clear enough as to which we're making, I'm going to ask you to raise that question or help us. Change the language so we have this focus properly. Okay. So if, if there's no disagreement, I would appreciate a motion from someone. Uh, about the final site plan. Uh, it is a motion to recommend the Marion City Council approval or disapproval as you wish. Do I have a motion?
Anne Marie's got her hand up.
I'm not prepared to make a motion that an engineer has something to say.
I'm so sorry.
Delay.
But, um, I know in our last review comments, the, the road widths inside the development are twenty-eight feet. And we had mentioned that they need a waiver.
Right.
Through the planning commission and city council. So I just want you to.
Remind them.
Remind you of that. And, and also I don't know how, the other thing we mentioned about a waiver was whether sidewalks on both sides of. Haywagon Lane would be required, but since it's not a city street, I don't know whether that still applies. And the last thing I just want to make commission aware of is that where Monroe Avenue butts Monroe or Schofield County. That part that's in Schofield County is not part of this project. So that's the responsibility of Schofield County to build that small, I don't know what it is, seventy-five hundred foot section out to meet. This development's road where it ends. So just be aware of that.
So that's an, is there any doubt that will happen?
This is regular Nancy in the question. It's under construction now. There's no doubt that road's going to.
Can I follow up a question on that? Is there anything in the plans for a deed at access to the right away?
Not by the developer. What the HOA does after they get turned over the roads, I can't speak for that. But as of right now, developers not putting any restrictions on it, gates, et cetera. But the HOA may change their mind whenever they are turned over to them.
It's difficult for us to, um, consider maybe, for me as a new person especially.
to consider voting on this when I don't know that there's going to be permanent access to Showfield. And I don't know how anyone else feels about that, but that was actually in my notes as a condition was deeded access to Battle Mixer.
So that was another hour and a half discussion.
I, you know, and I'm sure that I have missed things.
Oh, yeah.
I do follow that.
Well, I understand. I'm not, I don't mean to belittle it, but been in true, true sensation. That was a very heated conversation during those hearings. And even Showfield was split fifty-fifty on whether the connection or not. For many different reasons.
Of course.
Um, everything else. So it's more of Old Town of White's Pond has access to Monroe Avenue. The likelihood of them wanting to go to Gil's Neck Road. Maybe. So the question is, is if the access is blocked through Old Town of White's Pond, the people that are harmed are residents of the county, not residents of the city.
Well, I, I wonder if we've consulted the Lewis Fire Department because then
They will be assaulted. So in order for them to put up a gate, guess who has to approve it?
Okay, because my fear is that this will become a one entrance, one exit community, which is something in our comp plan that we do not want, correct?
So you could actually make that a condition of approval?
Exactly.
Yeah, that's why I had it listed here.
And then if that is then made a condition of approval and the HOA then tries to go to Sussex County to get that changed, that may hold some weight to the fact that the city has then required it to be open.
I don't see how that's.
And then also then, how do, how do you block a city street? Cause Monroe Street, Monroe Avenue is supposed to be a.
When Monroe City Street ends at the property line, it becomes private roadway. There's no way the city can impose a restriction on private land. I think it'd be an illegal requirement. Now, I understand the encouragement of not allowing that. But that's a county private road matter that the city unfortunately, as I say, now goes back to the question about the whole interconnection to Bay Breeze, which is another hour and a half conversation. As far as that goes, they may change their minds in the future as far as that connection goes. Which is kind of why we, everyone kind of agreed, hey, it makes sense to let Philly Lane be that way. So if Bay Breeze ever does, and I'm not encouraging it, not if anyone's in line, I'm not encouraging it by any stretch of imagination. But the provision is there should people change their mind. I get hesitant. I'll let Mr. Hud comment if he really wants to comment on it about trying to impose a condition on private land. That's not the city, because the city's road, their responsibility is at the property line of Old Town and White's Pond. Whether the city likes it or not, that's just, that's just the facts. And I'm sorry to, to say it that way, but that's the truth of the matter.
So essentially, we really are going to be voting and considering a one access plan?
Yes. But fundamentally, there's interconnection. There, there is interconnection to, to the county's land and the county's land right now, that, that subdivision's going to be open. Um, but you don't control that part of the south. Bay Breeze has spoken, this body will counsel, this body kind of agreed, okay, we're not going to force a connection to Bay Breeze. So indirectly, yes, that's what this body said. It'd be recognized there's some risk at Showfield County. There's some risk at Bay Breeze, but ultimately this still was the, the best plan that, that came forth. There will not be a second access on to Freeman Highway. I can guarantee that from now to, to the cows come home. So this was kind of the best plan we could put together with the interest of everybody that was involved in all this public hearings.
There, will there be ultimately, uh, interaction with the second phase of the development? And will there ultimately be a Gil's Neck Road? I don't remember how that'll.
There's no, there's no future plans right now for that, for that part of it, whether the interconnection happens, that'd again be a conversation between that landowner and Showfield. And could there be another access Gil's Neck? There, there could be, but that plan i- it's been put way to the side as they've put all their focus and attention on this plan, um, to see it to the finish line.
If I'm reading this right, not having the interconnection will ultimately relieve some pressure on the intersection. Subject to the consideration of there's only one way in and one way out.
I missed that one.
Be- because people can't cut through and because.
Right. There, there will be more traffic coming from Gil's Neck Road, Showfield, whatever, through the Monroe intersection.
The model, the model, the model projected acts, but really happens that things change. Could there be more traffic, could be more traffic again. Um, I know developers met with Showfield a couple of times over this, and ultimately they decided that they were not going to put a gate up. And that's as of, you know, past meetings today. Again, I don't want to sit here on the record to say I can't guarantee it, that can't guarantee it. Do I foresee a gate going there? I really don't, because I do think everyone's going to see the benefit of it when it finally happens. But again, I don't want to speak for that community. And at the same time, I don't want to miss the, the commission to think that it can't happen when it could. Like, I don't want to put odds on it, but I'd at least want to. Well, I've said it to you many times. I kind of give you the open honest what I think. And that's kind of what I, what I think standing here before you today.
But we could certainly, this planning commission could put a condition on this plan that at least on our side.
Yes, yes, on your side. That's correct.
I, I, we can bifurcate it. We can make a condition that it not be blocked in the city property and recommend that the Ameren City Council urge, endorse and support making sure that Showfield is open on the other side of the county side. But we, as you've said, and it's blabbering the point, we can't mandate what Showfield's going to do. And I think they've changed their mind from the last time we talked to them. And I think you're correct that as this evolves, it will become naturally more acceptable to them that this is an open pass through, that it's not blocked and stays open. So again, I'm going to try and move us along here. We have lots of things that we have to address individually as recommendations or conditions to Ameren City Council, but I need a motion first from someone. That's not, I'll do it at the same time.
I, I, I move that we accept the plan as presented, um, subject to my teammates here coming up with the conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Vice Chair seconds it. All right, now, in discussion, um, let's deal with some of these issues that we've talked about and see if we're making them a condition or recommendation. And Janelle, you need to come back and make sure that we cover everyone that's listed. Um, we can handle a couple, uh, first.
I've got seven.
So why don't you go down your list first and then we'll go back to other ones.
So there's a recommendation to require the, the signal be installed as Monroe Avenue is constructed or, um, or as, um, access to Monroe Avenue is, is made possible. Recommendation that access, um, to Monroe Avenue be allowed when the signal is installed. Um, diversification of plant species in the stormwater management ponds. Replace, um, the sugar maple trees with oak or another species. Um, add street trees along lots fifty to fifty-five, sixty to sixty-four, seventy-two to seventy-seven. Um, allow, um, the approval of the plan to mayor and council without the entrance permit. And then require an open connection on Mon- of Monroe Street to Showfield.
And the road waiver of twenty-eight feet?
And the roadway of twenty-eight feet.
Waiver.
And the sidewalk on, um, hay wagon?
Is not a requirement as it is not a city street.
Right.
It's a drive aisle.
I think the other issue, as I recall, and my colleague to my left is the one that helps us. I think the also issue, in addition to more trees, there was a tree spacing issue that they need more evenly spaced throughout the development, that they not be clustered.
The city street, the, the street trees.
Street trees, right?
There's a, uh, line in the code about spacing of trees. That's, uh, depends on the, the height, the width and things like that. But that's, I'm sure Parks and Recreation probably looked up on that.
Hopefully. But we can still make it a condition.
Okay.
Make sure, emphasize the point.
And while I understand we can't requirement, we require, I thought there was also a discussion of, uh, the DRBA fence and, uh, ensuring, uh, and recommending or encouraging that, uh, them to, uh, not simply we, uh, replace that fence, uh, but we, we use that fence, but rather replace it with a, uh, uh, concrete and.
We can encourage DRBA to do that?
I understand.
So that could be, um.
That's a recommendation.
That's a recommendation that we encourage DRBA to replace the fence to
Yeah.
Um, a more natural looking fence along the front edge.
And is the berm also part of this?
No, but Charlie's got his hand up.
I just want to say that, um, we need to look carefully at that, that street tree um, condition, because I know there's some stormwater pipes that are located along the curb line that might um, prohibit that from being practical.
Yeah, there were some utilities in some of those areas that may actually. So it says, uh, adding street trees, it doesn't say how many. So if they can.
Well, subject, subject to non-interference with utilities.
Yep.
Taking into consideration the, the underground utilities as a, as a condition that we should not affect. All right, we have a recommendation then on the DRBA fencing, that it be replaced with compatible fencing to the other, others in the neighborhood in the, uh, on Monroe Avenue, on, on Monroe, on Freeman Highway. Um, the split rail preferably. Are there other recommendations we want to make that are not a condition? So I think we're up to nine conditions and if only one recommendation at the moment, do we have any more? Mr. Fenata, do you have another one?
Well, I think you missed the one about the amenities only being for the use of White's Pond.
All right, so that's a condition to amend. Amend the.
Oh, that, that.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
He doesn't have one, but he's borrowing one.
So I'm sharing.
So they, they offered to, I think when Mr. Pan raised it, they offered to add as a general note on page V one hundred that the amenities would be, um, for the residents and their guests.
Okay, so go ahead.
Uh, I was going to request that, um, additional uh, amelioration, uh, be added between the homes facing the highway, uh, and the highway. So that may be a fence. It may be.
A double line of vegetation or?
Well, there, there is a fairly substantial, I think, buffer being planted. Um, perhaps it becomes adding shrubs to that planting and it's not just trees, but there's a continuous uh, form of vegetation. Blocking the highway. So I would like to make that a condition.
Okay. How would you, how would we state that? Do you have an idea how we would state that?
So to recommend additional trees, shrub or fence along Freeman Highway to provide um, a continuous buffer to the backs of the houses.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Just, just a clarification, recommendation or condition?
She wants it a condition.
And then I'll ask question, condition is reasonable. And then, then, you know, because the code doesn't require that particular type of thing. That's why I asked the question about conditions versus recommendation.
You know, it's, she's asking it for, to be a condition. This, this body's going to make a determination. I, again, you know, I point to record evidence and reasons to, you know, attach it as a, as a formal condition versus a recommendation. And remember, these are recognition, recommended.
Overall, recommendation Ameren City Council, so.
Conditions are one, conditions are, are one, I mean, conditions are that, conditions you have, you have to do.
They're still only recommended Ameren City Council. They have to make the decision.
Understand. I just want to understand the weight they carry when it goes to council. So listen, understands where I'm going with that, that question.
You also, um, uh, Commissioner Moser, you also talked about the, um, vegetation in the ponds. And you want?
Yes, I.
I already got that. Okay. All right. So are we up to eleven now, conditions and one recommendation?
I'm gonna, we're all done. I'm going to ask you to give all those.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, just make sure we got, do you have, how many do you have, uh, Janelle?
I thought it was ten. Recommendation.
I went to thirteen items. My, I didn't remember.
All right, let's, why don't we go back slowly through those and make sure that we're all in agreement on whether they're conditions or recommendations? So.
So I've got a recommendation that the signal be installed as Monroe Street is made passable. A recommendation that access be provided when the signal is installed. Um, a condition that there's, um, you diversify the plant species in the stormwater management ponds. Um, a condition that you replace the sugar maple trees with oak or another species. A condition that you add street trees along lots fifty to fifty-five, sixty to sixty-four, seventy-two to seventy-seven. And ensure that all the street trees are more evenly spaced and that there's not interference with utilities. Yeah, I just put it all together. Um, a recommendation to approve the plan without the entrance permit. Um, approval of the waiver of this twenty-eight foot wide street width. A recommendation to encourage DRBA to replace the fence with a compatible fence along Freeman Highway, example, spur, split rail. A condition that amenities be for the use of White's Pond residents and guests. Um, a condition that additional trees, shrubs or fence to provide a continuous, um, buffer along new road. Um, to, to buffer the, along Freeman Highway, sorry.
It's a bigger development than we thought.
Going, I'll do it. Along Freeman Highway, um, to provide additional buffer between the road and the backs of the houses. And that's all I've got.
Janelle, the last one, is like, condition or recommendation?
Condition.
The only I thought was a condition, not a recommendation, related to the opening of the, um, Monroe Avenue access pending the, um, signal line.
Yeah, I have everything related to the signal as a recommendation.
I've heard Commissioner saying they wanted that as a condition. Am I misunderstood? Am I misremembering?
Would, would certainly love to see it as a condition, but I would defer to Glenn on that.
Well, I, I do agree, um, with the developer that this is going to be largely dependent upon what, what Deladot is willing to do. You can certainly make it a condition. I, of course, will do my homework before it makes it to city council and they're making their final decision. So if, if it's, if it's important to you at that level, make it a condition and we'll, we'll go from there.
And, you know, perhaps another novel alternative there would be, um, to restrict movement direction. That it be not, no left-hand turns, for example, initially. Um, until the traffic light was there, because I think that would probably be the greatest danger, public safety danger, that, you know, all turns could be right hand, um. Would, if that would be
Sounds like.
More reasonable.
Sounds like a real enforcement challenge. I mean, as you said, we've already got people crossing the road with bicycles. They're pushing.
And it also may be that they're going to make a right turn on Monroe Avenue as opposed to a left turn coming out of the development. It goes through Showfield to get to Gil's Neck to go around that way. Which may complicate the thing.
Well, not until things are structured. There's no way to get through to Gil's Neck now, is there? Oh, there is. Okay.
All right. So what is our final counting?
Did, did we also get the, the condition that you're going to require open, an open connection to, yeah, I did read that one to Monroe Street on Showfield. Sorry, we were just double checking. We'd gotten all of them and I don't remember reading that one now.
Okay. Are there any questions about the conditions or the recommendations? Are we clear? Do we want to go through them one more time before we have to individually vote? Why don't we just read through them again one more time just to make sure we got them, please?
Okay.
Go slowly so everybody can keep their scorecard.
Um, so we've got a recommendation that, um, the signably installed as Monroe Avenue is made passable. It is now a condition that access to the development um, be allowed when the signal is installed. Um, a condition that you provide a diversity of plant species in the stormwater management ponds. A condition to replace the sugar maple trees with oak trees or another type of species. A condition to add street trees, um, and a better, more even spacing for lots fifty to fifty-five, sixty to sixty-four and seventy-two to seventy-seven. Um, with the understanding that there's non-inferior, non, in, no interference with utilities. Um, to recommend, um, approval without the, the entrance permit. A condition to require an open connection on Monroe Street to Showfield. Um, approval of the waiver of the, to the twenty-eight feet road width. Um, a recommendation to encourage DRBA, replace the fence with a compatible fence on Freeman Highway, example of split rail. A condition that amenities be for the use of White's Pond residents and their guests. And a condition that additional trees, shrubs or fence be installed along Freeman Highway, um, to provide a continuous buffer between the road and the backs of the houses.
Does that hear the road width in there?
Yeah, yes. Yes.
Okay.
Because that's just a waiver, approval of the waiver.
Not a condition or a, or a recommendation.
Yeah, that was a recommendation of approval for the waiver.
All right, do we get everything from the Commissioner's perspective?
Are we discussing each of these?
We can.
It's on the, on the.
We're gonna vote on it individually.
Okay, on the diverse plant species, I guess my question is to just say, increase the diversity. I mean, it's, it's five right now, but what are we suggesting it be increased to? Because if, if you go from five to six, you've increased it, and I'm not sure that would really address what you're.
Would be a reasonable number.
I'm, I'm gonna ask, does that then have to go back to the conservation district for review and approval? Because they have to approve the plant species.
I was, I was gonna just kind of let the body go through with the question, I was gonna go to council into that. I have to do some research, because I do believe not only we have to go back to conservation districts for new plan approval, because that is a change of that. I believe we're also gonna have to go back to Parks and Recreation Committee for new approvals, because we're now gonna modify the approved landscaping and open space plan. So it does add a, two new wrinkles to the conversation to address the recommendation conditions, should this body decide to approve them as discussed. And council approved it, technically council couldn't approve it, so I went back at the body plan, so now I'm back in this, to this path of how to get to the end result.
I just wanted to ask, that's all I was asking for, I'm not trying to, I just wanted to make sure he was gonna get.
Can I just make a note that there have been several times since we started this where I just think it's important that we develop better working relationship with Parks and Recreation, so that we aren't creating this kind of confusion and second guessing, I think we, we need to figure out how to get this done, so that everybody's on the same page.
Well.
Outside of this particular job.
We'll just leave that in the city manager's hands. Since she doesn't have a mic at the moment. I, I'm gonna suggest, instead of twenty, let, let's talk about ten as a diversification, it's double what is in there now, let's not go too far, so we have obstacles that, that are going to be insurmountable at the Parks and Rec or even Sussex Conservation District level. I think we need to make this realistic and achievable, and I certainly agree with your point. But I would think doubling what's there is, is a, is a great step in the right direction and hopefully will not cause the others to want to start from ground zero and start over again. All right. Are we ready to start going through these one at a time to vote on them and to make a record? Okay, so you've got the list, how many is on the list now of conditions?
I have seven conditions. One recommendation for approval, and the others are recommendations.
Okay. Glenn, do we need to take individual votes on individual explanations on each amendment or? No, that's what I thought. So we can vote on each one, and then when we do our explanation of the final vote, that's when we have to go into health, safety, and welfare issues.
That's correct, just remember, each of these that you vote on individually are amendments to the original motion that's on the, on table.
To approve the final site plan. All right, so let's take them individually for a, a vote, and then we'll go back and have to explain it on the final cumulative vote. So go ahead, what's the first one?
So it's a recommendation that the signal be installed as Monroe Avenue is made passable.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, number two.
So this is a condition that access be provided when the signal is installed.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining.
Opposed.
Oops, sorry, Joe, Joe Hopper opposes?
Yes.
Okay. So it's eight to one.
So this would be a condition to provide diversity of at least ten species of plant species within the stormwater management ponds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Trees.
So this would be a condition to replace the sugar maple trees with an oak or another native species.
Yeah, she recommended sycamore, I think, is the alternative to the oak.
That was a recommendation.
A condition.
That's a condition.
A condition. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, next.
So this would be a condition to add street trees and more evenly space the trees, and then add them along lots fifty to fifty-five, sixty to sixty-four, and seventy-two to seventy-seven. But not to interfere with utilities.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Next.
So this is a recommendation to approve the plan without the entrance permit.
It's a, it's a waiver essentially.
Yes, it's a waiver.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining.
Okay, so this would be a con, a condition to require open connection on Monroe Street to Showfield.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining.
So, and this would be a recommendation for a waiver for the street width to be twenty-eight feet.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, go ahead.
A recommendation to encourage GRBA to replace the fence along Freeman Highway with a compatible fence. It means, as an example, is split rail.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed.
Opposed. No.
Eight to one.
Okay, the next is a condition that the amenities be for the use of White's Pond's residents and their guests.
And Mr. Panetta, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Go ahead.
Okay, and then this is the, the last one that I have, is a condition that additional trees, shrubs, or fence be lo, located along Freeman's Highway to provide a continuous buffer between the road and the backs of the houses.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous. All right. We have an amended motion with the conditions and recommendations we've just voted on, now we need to individually vote on the motion as amended and explain why we're voting in the way we do. We have to make a record individually as to the rationale behind our supporting or opposing this particular motion, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, this is, this part of the vote is really helpful to city council, so that it's, it's as much as you can explain as to why you're voting the way you're voting and why you think the recommendations or conditions are appropriate, put that on the record, remember you can rely upon other people's comments as to why they're voting the way they are, but, but try to make a record, it is, it is really helpful to city council with this today.
All right.
Do you want me to start?
Yes, I am, it's your motion, I'd like you to start.
So I move to accept the project as presented with the following, subject to the following recommendations and conditions as we've just voted. The applicant's met, as far as I can tell, every requirement that we've, we've asked of them, there are things I would rather have different, but the applicant has done a, a great job of, of answering some very challenging situations, particularly with the transportation question at the Monroe intersection. I have nothing else, I think I need to say, no greater justification, I think it meets the requirements.
All right, Joe.
I'd like to vote in favor of this with the recommendations and conditions. The reason I voted negative on the access is the first item I voted negative on. Basically, I've bicycled through there two, three years ago, I mean, there'll be no way to enforce the access point of preventing access once the road is complete. You'll have real estate agents taking people down there, you'll have individuals going down there to see what's going on. I mean, the reason I voted against the fence, the DRBA fence, is that basically you have twenty lots against there, and a a split rail fence does nothing to keep small children and pets in the backyard. I mean, you can have split rail fence there, but the property owners are gonna put up twenty different varieties of fence, whether they want security or privacy, or, you know, invisible pet fence, whatever. And am I the only one here who thinks there's too many micromanagers here? I think we're spending too much time on too much little details, I mean, but that's just me, thank you.
John? I vote in favor of sending this plan forward to Mayor and City Council. Every time we spoke with the developer and we asked for something, it seemed like they really tried hard to meet our our requests or change the plans to what we want to see to the best of their abilities. I also think that the conditions and recommendations we have at tonight are pretty important. I know the signal's not within our control, but that would be wise of us to try to push for that to be completed as soon as possible.
I vote aye on the, on the passage. My concern is, or my, my rationale for that is that the minimum requirements aren't met. I personally would question and like to see council perhaps look further at why there is a waiver. Reducing the street size, why a waiver on a brand-new development is, is needed. And just reinforcing that I do strongly believe that the traffic light is important as well as the landscaping and the berm, which is already in the conditions.
Thank you.
Okay, I am voting in favor of the plan and conditions. I think that the conditions add a better protection of the health and safety of the future residents of the subdivision. And I think the issues relative to the plant material will lead to better survival and thriving of that material, which in turn will help provide beautification of the, of the subdivision.
Thank you.
I'm gonna vote in favor. I really think the developer has done a nice job in terms of what he's presented. I would frankly rather this not be there, but since that's horses out of the barn, I think the conditions recommended tonight are important. I guess I think probably the most important was the traffic flow. Because not only do people have to get out of this development, they have to get out of Lewis coming southbound to Freeman Highway, and you know, I'm really not enthusiastic about a traffic light, but I don't see any other solution at this point. I'd ask for the city council to push more really hard.
Thank you, Nancy.
I vote a yes, I believe the applicant has addressed the requirements and the comments that came earlier, although I wasn't a member of, of this group when they were made. They've received the approval of the relevant organizations. And I, I think that the conditions we've set are important. But I also think the recommendations that we're making are equally important, although we do not have control to be able to make those conditions. So I would urge city council to take seriously the recommendation concerning the signal and also the, the, the split rail fence. I think we, as a community, need to work closely with our with the, the other organizations that we should be collaborating with around these, these kinds of decisions. Even though we don't control them.
Tom?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna abstain, if I may, and the rationale for that, to, to say so listener and to, for the record is I don't feel like I adequately know a, all the background and history on the project, now that might be, might be my shortcoming from not doing my homework, but being new to the commission, I, I can't make that decision frankly, to approve, so I frankly, it's, I can't find a rationale not to, based on, to vote no, but I will abstain, I don't think the horse is out of the barn, the horse is down Freeman right now, and there's eighty-five houses in this area. You know, it's again, it's a, a little late to the party here, but I don't see it, and I'm going to abstain because of that, thank you very much.
The chair votes in favor of the motion as amended, setting forth the conditions and recommendations that we have articulated. I would first associate myself specifically with the remarks of Commissioner Stacy, who covered, I think, the salient points that the developer has met the conditions of the code, has met the conditions as set forth by Parks and Rec and by this body in previous consideration. I would echo the thought, however, as a general proposition, that I don't think eighty-five houses, eighty-four houses, eighteen houses, twenty houses, whatever the number is, is really in the future of Lewis. I think we have, have allowed the code to get away from us and have put in place opportunities for development in excess of what is the capacity of this community. It is no criticism of this particular developer to follow the code and do what he or she wants to do. But I think as a body, the government of Lewis has allowed the development arm to swing freely and widely and has not put into perspective the future of our community when we talk about developments in Lewis annexation or otherwise. It is important to manage development, it is important to put conditions and recommendations in place. But it's equally or more important to manage the, the, the community in total rather than on an individual isolated basis. As I said in one of the other matters that I voted on, while I did not agree with the annexation and the plan for that particular development, I had to follow the code. The code is set forth by the Mayor and City Council. And not just because I'm chairman of this commission, but as a lawyer and as a citizen, I have to abide by what my government has set up as the ground rules for us to proceed. But I think the ground rules need changing long term. It is overdue, and we need to be looking at these things in a different way. We will be in a parking lot from Lewis to Maryland in the not-too-distant future, go down twenty-four, go down nine, go down Gil's Neck, go down Freeman Highway. My wife sat the other day on Freeman Highway trying to go in on King's Highway and was ten minutes before there was even a break in the traffic, coming over the bridge. And that happens all too frequently, I think we've all been inundated with visitors and others, this post-pandemic, hopefully knock on wood environment that we're in now. And we are, we are bearing the burden of servicing a community that is being stretched to the limits. Our public works, our roads, our schools, everything is getting inundated with a population that we're gonna be paying for, for quite a while. And I, I'm gonna get off my soapbox in two seconds and simply say we need to change the ground rules upon which we are developing, growing, and changing for the future. Not just for, as I said earlier and got criticized for, not just for twenty-twenty-one, but for the next ten years, twenty years, thirty years, whatever, we need to take a longer perspective on this. And as I've said prior to tonight, the comp plan is something I want to take a look at again after we finish some important subdivision, annexation, and other rules that are now pending as the executive committee begins to do some of the work on, on sea level rise and other issues. But before this, my term ends next year, I want us to look at the comp plan again and make some serious changes to it, to update it, upgrade it, and give us a better foundation going forward. So I appreciate very much the work that's been done by this developer. I think they have been responsive to the questions and issues. Have not lost any hair tonight, even though they might have wanted to pull some out. But I think, you know, we are in a position to play by the rules. And that is what a, a, I think a, a good government does. That's the foundation of democracy, and I'm playing by the rules. But I've just articulated, I think, a broader concern that I have that will apply, at least in my consideration of things going forward. So with that, we have an eight to zero to one abstention vote in favor of sending this recommendation on to Mayor and City Council. And we'll now move on to the next item on the agenda, thank you gentlemen for your assistance.
Thank you very much.
The new business tonight is the presentation, discussion, and possible recommendation to Mayor and City Council regarding CZ two dash twenty-one lands of Lewis Middle School for change of zone from CF paren E, closed paren, Community Facilities Educational Zone to GC General Commercial Zone for Sussex County Tax Map, three-three-five dash eight-point-one-one dash three-zero-point-zero-zero. Somebody else can read this in the future, but. Somebody else can read this in the future, but it's really a lot of fun to have to read all this very quickly.
Oh, I can read it fast.
This is a recommendation, a request rather, from the Cape Pen Open School Board. Janelle circulated today the original application, which reflects the school board's desire to change the boundary here, which means we have to change the zoning. And then the lot line has to be adjusted. This apparently was an oversight at some point in the past when the commercial facility that's there encroached upon the school property. The school has decided to generously deed or ask us to agree to change the zoning so they can deed four thousand and some square feet to the commercial entity. I have I'm unaware that there's been any objection to this generosity. And we have, we've had a packet prepared with lot lines and maps for us to look at. I'm going to open it for questions for anyone to raise. And we'll go from there. Are there questions about this change of zoning?
This is the JK Hudson property.
Yes.
It's like a garage.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Joe, did you have a question?
I was saying it's the Exxon station, the old Exxon.
Yeah.
Correct.
The zero, zero gas price, which I love. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the rezoning? John, you move that? Thank you. Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the rezoning to general commercial of this particular site, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No abstentions? The matter carries unanimously. I don't think we need a recorded vote on this. It's going forth to Mayor and City Council, and there'll be things that follow. All right, yes.
Thank you for being patient.
You did such a great job. It was easy.
Let Ryan know how it went.
Thank you. And I want to move on to reports from our three subcommittees and then from commissioners, our liaisons.
Can I ask a quick question before we move on to the reports? I don't know the history of this in terms of how the encroachment happened, but are there processes in place now that in terms of the issuance of building permits, et cetera, that would prevent this from reoccurring? I mean,
Yes.
Okay.
Now, that's all I need to know. This is a much older building.
I understand. Just want to check that, you know.
In the past, but yeah, nowadays there would be multiple inspections and plot plans required at time of building permit.
So we're confident our processes, current processes would prevent this.
Would have caught this, yes.
It's not for me to talk about the beach. All right, I want to move on to the reports by first starting out by saying, I think it's time for the annexation and subdivision subcommittees to bring their substantive findings to the full commission. I'm going to suggest pending further consideration of Fisher's Cove, that either in August or September, the annexation committee will report to us and we'll work on that schedule between now and then. And that following that in September or October, the subdivision subcommittee give a substantive report to the full commission. I think it's important that we move these along, and I want to make sure that there is input from the full commission at the earliest opportunity, excuse me, at the earliest appropriate opportunity to make sure that we're considering all the factors we should. And ultimately to get these matters before Mayor and City Council sooner than later. I think these are both incredibly important subcommittee works. And we need to get them to Mayor and City Council in the fall, early winter at the latest. So I'm pushing along a little bit, the good work that these folks have done. I know annexation met today. It's not a criticism of any subcommittee. It's just a suggestion that we need to advance the ball on this sooner than later and bring this before Mayor and City Council. We have two council members present tonight. We want to give you guys something to do. We know you have nothing else on your plate. So, all right, annexation zone subcommittee report, please.
So I'm just going to start by saying I'll take responsibility for the rate at which we've been moving. I, and I said this today in the annexation meeting. I personally put the brakes on the annexation, given the way the whole sea level rise excellent recharge process worked out. Called into question for me, the way this, the way everything we do works, I felt like I, what I said today in the meeting is, I think we need to be a lot more careful about the way we found whatever we advanced to city council with information. We front loaded with proper information. We state the problems so that everybody, the public, can understand what's going on. I think we need to do a much better job of documenting what we're doing. So that was part of what we discussed today. We are, I would say focused primarily on the issues of open space. Some of the comments I made earlier today, the arrangement of open space. Not just simply calculating a gross amount of open space in a in a property. And we, what we're going to do is we're going to go and Janelle has agreed to gather together all the conversation we've had and try to distill that down to a series of concepts and points that we want to, we want to bring back to the planning commission. So this is perfectly, we just talked about this today. I I would say I will not be available at the August meeting. So I cannot present in August rather than we did it in September.
Okay, you're on in September. I remember now tonight you forewarned me that you would not be here in August. So you've got September. John, that means you've got October.
Oh, and one more thing. We spent, we spent a considerable.
Well, if you're ready, we'll talk about it.
Right. I mean, we can also go the other way. We spent a fair amount of time learning more about subdivision committee because I think there's, as I said to you, John, before the meeting, I think there's a lot of opportunity for overlap in effort. And I want to make sure we're as coordinated as we can be so that nobody's wasting time. Nobody's reinventing the wheel. I know I'm capable of reinventing the wheel, being the Michael Penniger that I am.
Good for you.
Okay, floodplain.
Yes, we've been waiting for comments from the state and feds and and to date, we have nothing. So we're assuming they have no issues. So we would like to proceed with the revised draft at the next meeting.
Okay, so August, we will take up the revised draft.
Yes.
Please, if you see the revised draft, you have any comments or suggestions before the meeting, please get in touch with Melanie and Janelle so we can make a very productive meeting. I expect August to be a busy meeting. Let me underscore that. A very busy meeting. Fisher's Cove will be on the agenda. And we may or may not conclude consideration of Fisher's Cove. I'm not forewarning or for ordaining anything, but we will handle other business in addition. So we have a lot to do in August. Unfortunately, it's not summer vacation, except for some of us.
And procedurally, when these reports are distributed, are they emailed to us in advance or how does that work?
We get two ways depending on when the material is ready. It may be distributed individually by the subcommittees for soliciting comments from commissioners. But no less than seven days before the meeting, the agenda is posted and the supporting material is posted and Janelle notifies us that everything is uploaded at that point. We will have an abundance of information about Fisher's Cove to consider because of the comment period that can goes until the end of the month. So we will be, you'll have more reading than you ever wanted to do and more thinking about some of these issues. Which again, we want to funnel through Janelle. We can't talk amongst them any of these issues prior to our public consideration of these matters. We have to be very strict and let her be our scout to go out and find answers or seek additional information until we have a public forum. But I want to reassure you as a new commissioner, both new commissioners, we will take time to consider these matters. We're not just trying to get these done. We're going to give it thorough consideration, which is why I said August may not be when we finish it, we'll finish it when we finish it. We're going to do it right rather than quickly. Okay. Thank you for moving along. Maybe the feds or the state or somebody will wake up someday, but in the meantime, we're taking their silences acquiescence. We're going forward. John, subdivision code?
Yes, we had a very successful meeting, our first in person meeting not too long ago. We're really blessed that I think they have the city staff that we have working on this project with us. They are so knowledgeable. In this entire chapter one seventy process, it's been very helpful. Some of the things we've been doing now is really getting our elbows dirty and the nitty gritty of it. We talked about articles, one, two, and three, rewording some of that. And we had a lot come out of our last meeting, some term changes. Basically, the order of operations. We had some good input from a pair of city council members as well. Tom Weston, city staff are working on getting all those changes put onto one document so we can have something to bring back and say, here's what we've come to so far. Here's the product we've been, we've just been hacking this thing apart. There are a lot of documents online right now for the subcommittee website. If you want to take a look at those, you can really get a better idea of what we've been working on, what we've been looking at, some of the verbiage we're looking at for articles, one, two, and three. We even got into some term changes. Final plan approval and preliminary plan review, which would precede that. So preliminary plan views trying to even be clear and right, trying to be clear in our words and our verbiage and trying to clean up some of the staff report sections and make it easier, not just for, you know, the city, but for the developers and the people of Lewis as well to understand what the process is, what's going on. And getting mayor and city council involved a little bit earlier in the process as well. And fixing up a lot of those things that we've talked about throughout the process that just aren't really needed or don't make sense right now. We're trying to pay attention to that as well. But all the information right now is online. There's a, there's a good deal of it. I'm hoping to have something a little bit better for our next meeting. And we're really pushing hard to get this done. Because I think it is more of a concrete project for us, it being, you know, more procedural and what order things are going in. So we're really hoping to get this wrapped up. That portion of this subcommittee at least wrapped up.
We'll look forward to getting, getting your cumulative analysis circulated. I just want to remind all commissioners that these subcommittees, while we have tried to share the burden by having only three or so commissioners participate, everyone is welcome to join the subcommittee meetings. They are public meetings. And you can go in or out as you choose. But if you have a moment, it's important that we all get well versed in these subjects as quickly as we can. Yes, sir.
Jones' report raises a question for me about city council involvement. We had this technological glitch this morning. My intention was because I could see that there were two city councilmen that were in, that were present online. They weren't in the room. And my hope was, given that we just completed as a, you know, first the planning commission and then city council, the opportunity to go through the whole process with the express, the first time through with the express. I was hoping to get some feedback from city councilmen on their experiences, their issues they may have had, whatever. And I was advised that we have to be careful how we engage the city council at this point, but given what John just said, it sounds like he's getting feedback. So I'm just curious what the parameters are, what the limits are, is that what we can do?
At the subdivision, subdivision code, subcommittee, questions were asked and then answered. So it wasn't an ongoing dialogue. Which I think is what we, again, councils asked you to look into something. They provided their guidance, so they want you to kind of look into it. Answering questions, I think is perfectly fine, but once you start getting into a little bit more of a an in-depth dialogue, at what point then are they then helping write an ordinance? And then does that get into a little of a a legal mess that I just, I try to keep people out of because they're going to end up voting on it. You're going to end up voting on it. And I just.
Given the, given what I just heard about the attempts at trying to give city council an earlier perspective on, on, on the process, seems to me all, all of that dialogue would be positive. I don't understand how it, how it complicates or creates a problem for the city.
I think you're talking about two different things, actually. I think in the subdivision committee, what John was talking about is in the actual subdivision process, approval process, they're trying to get city council involved. They're going to rewrite the code so the city council is involved at an earlier stage.
What I, okay, but what I'm talking about is there were and I'm just curious what the boundaries are for what, how we can engage city council members in these subcommittee meetings just to discuss. I, 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 I just am trying to not create a situation where we've presented all this stuff and then city council, well, this isn't what we want. I'd rather be not wasting anybody's time.
Right. On legislative things such as what you're working on now is new legislative type issues, you can have a little bit more involvement with city council members than if it was an actual application that's going to be pending before them at some point. So, but the, but the issue you run into is some of the work you're doing touches on some of the things that they're doing and we try to keep them protected from saying or doing things in an open forum that's going to suggest that they prejudge some other application that's pending for them. So it, I, I share that I, I'm sitting on a committee. I also would want to know, you have some feedback from city council as to, you know, are we, are we heading in the direction that you think is going to be something that's going to be helpful to city council? So I, so I can't say no, no conversation whatsoever. And what Janelle says is appropriate. When you get to a point where you've got questions where there's a, there's a fork in the road and you can go this way or that way, and everybody's kind of on the fence. If there's a member of council in the room, I think you can say, you know, here, we're struggling here. Do you have any thoughts on this? You know, but, but generally the committee should strive to come to conclusions and recommendations that are committee recommendations, not something that just echoes what a city council member who was sitting in the room, you know, happens to suggest.
Further, it's my understanding that on the twenty sixth of July, when we have our training session, this is going to be a subject of that training session, correct, Anne Marie?
Yes, correct.
So we will, we will try and define the lines, if you will, of appropriate or inappropriate engagement of the, the mayor and city council. But I think we all agree that we witnessed recently the disconnect because we did not have enough engagement at an earlier stage in consideration of some very important issues. And we don't want to repeat that because we have a lot of important things to do and we should be working together, not in silos.
Yeah, I mean, maybe I confuse you with, maybe I said the word input more. They were just kind of asking questions. They, they were very inquisitive pair. We didn't really engage them or say, hey, what do you think?
I'm not.
We're just through the course of our regular business. They happen to be there. One, I believe, was liaison. So he was part ex officio, right? No, all right.
Don't worry about it. Khalil can be the spokesperson for Mayor and City Council, ex officio or not. So he's our, he's our guy. All right. So just a reminder, and Anne Marie, we have a little confusion. Is the training on the twenty sixth at six or six thirty? That's what I thought. Okay, six thirty, everybody.
I just I'm full of trouble tonight.
Do you think that's unusual?
No.
But you're sitting next to Joe's going to punch you.
Yes, exactly. Bob and I. I'm, I'm just curious. Subcommittee done? Are we kaput? Should we just abandon?
Yes, so the agenda says six o'clock.
Abandon ship.
But the invitation said six thirty.
Yes.
Yeah, I got it. Wait, let him settle there.
Sea level rise subcommittee is, is on hiatus at the moment until this executive committee completes its work.
Okay.
And then we'll see there are eleven people on the executive committee. And once that completes its work, there may be more for sea level rise or others to do, but right now that subject matter is before this executive. All right, can we, before Joe has a heart attack, can we move along to the city's listener liaisons and planner report? Glenn, could you give us an overview on the MOU, please?
On the MOU, I'm sorry.
Board of Public Works.
Board of Public Works MOU. If you knew how, how many MOUs I'm dealing with right now. You can say the MOU, which is the seventeen. So the, the, the MOU, seems like it was Eon together that actually did this. It, it accomplishes a few things. I wish I had in front of me because it, it addresses things like there are a number of properties that I wish I had in front of me because it, it, it addresses things like, there are a number of properties that the were purchased years ago that the BPW uses presently. And the MOU, um, the, part of the debate or part of the dispute that the city council has had with, with BPW through the years is whether these properties should be held in the name of the BPW or in the city's name. Currently, those properties are held as city properties for the benefit of BPW. It used to be that BPW could not own properties under their charter. The charter now allows them to own property jointly with the city. So part of the MOU requires that the um, city have those properties retitled so that they are jointly held between the city and BPW. That's one of the main items. Anne Marie, I'm struggling here. Your other. Well, the charter chains are different than the MOU, but. There's two charter changes. One charter changed to the BPW um, charter, but it accomplishes two things. One, it gives the BPW the ability to sue and be sued. Do you remember in the recent, well, not so recent anymore, Superior Court litigation.
New Rome.
Judge Bradley um, concluded that the BPW didn't have the ability to sue and be sued under their, under their charter. It's very important to them that they have that ability going, going forward. So the charter change gives them the ability to sue and be sued. The second thing it does is, and it was important to the city, that the city be able to control where the utility goes outside, where public utilities that are um, managed by the BPW, where those utilities um, are located outside of the city. So the second charter change requires that the BPW um, obtain the city's consent for any extensions of the utility outside of, outside of the city's borders. There's some caveats to that because there's certain areas that BPW is required to serve and I don't think the city's going to, would be able to stop those, those sorts of extensions. Those, those are the main things that really the city and, and BPW had some disputes over that I think are largely worked out in the, in the charter changes, but you're right, Anne Marie, they were addressed in the MOU as well. I can bring it up if we.
Well, as it pertains particularly to the planning commission work, I think.
Uh, the city and BPW have agreed to a master plan for the Schley Avenue properties, which is something that, you know, if a, a planning commission would be interested in. And it's to look at, you know, how best to use that property in the future. There's parking lots there. There's city buildings, there's BPW buildings, there's lay down areas. And some of that has created some consternation with some of the neighbors.
Right.
So that I, we don't have a date yet to start that, but that's.
We're actually, Ted and I are meeting with Austin and press next week to start talking about it. Um, some of the other things have to do with um, permit fees that we, you know, we're subject to the rules, you know, like they get, they'll get building permits, but we won't charge fees. They won't charge impact fees for city projects if it's, if it's beneficial to the public. There's um, the, the master plan, you know, it, some of the things are, are really operational in nature that wouldn't
Okay.
rise to, to the interest of, of the planning commission, but um.
One, one section deals with forest pavement and if the city, if the city. What was that one?
Right, that, that the city's starting back up its capital projects committee and, and there will be a BPW seat on it.
Well, can I just say for my colleagues, I'll be presumptuous, we are delighted that the MOU has been achieved. And that we're moving on in a more cooperative way and Glenn, I'm sorry to say that your buildings are going to go down, but.
The headaches are, are not worth it. I like, I like the stuff when we're working collaboratively, so.
All right, Joe.
There was one other thing in the MOU that um, there was an agreement because the city is looking at requiring porous pavement on uh, the streets.
Right.
And the MOU just confirms that, you know, I mean, obviously BPW builds to the city standards. But I, I didn't know if the rest of the uh, planning commission was aware of that change that the city's looking at doing.
Joe, H Park?
Nothing notable to report.
Okay. Janelle, is there anything else on your list?
Not that I can think of, no.
Okay, um, any other commissioner have a matter they wish to raise or to uh, inform us about? Hearing none, I'm going to move quickly to the minutes for the June sixteenth regular meeting. Um, are there any changes or additions to those minutes? Bob?
I have one and it just concerns a statement I made and then the way that it's sort of written up. Uh, so I just want to reiterate that uh, relative to Fisher's Cove development, I believe I can analyze the data, address it without preconditions and be very objective. Without um, and, and in partial. And so I'd like to, you know, a minor, that section that I was making notes. So I'd like a, a minor revision there that just says that because it sort of concentrates on the state line rate and stuff like that.
Yeah, I think the amendment that, that is here is that um, you have indicated you will make your decisions based on, the, the amendment would be you, you'll make your decisions based on verified science and facts, period. You believe you can be objective regarding the development of Fisher's Cove and therefore find no reason to recuse yourself. Okay, with that amendment, is there any other changes or suggested to the minutes of June sixteen? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nobody.
Nobody. No, it's just unanimous consent essentially. All right, um, who would like to make a motion to adjourn? Oh, we'll stay. All right, Melanie, Nancy seconds. Anyone opposed? They can stay. If not, we're adjourned at nine o'clock.